All order of the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, November the 17th, 7:00 P.M. You would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We led in prayer this evening by Mr. Jim Hale, a member at Stones Crossing Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go pray with me. Father, we thank you and praise you for all you've done, your loving, good, and gracious. Thank you for making us an image to exist in community with other people. We thank you for our city, thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city the great place it is. We ask that our city would be known as a righteous city, a city that confesses Jesus as Lord, a city of peace and hope, a city with happy homes, a city that is welcoming, a city that cares for the needy, a city that defends the innocent. Lord, we thank you for our civil government. I pray your civil servants would acknowledge this as a calling and perform it faithfully. We ask that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but that they would stand firm for truth and justice, keep them safe from harm as they serve our community. I pray for this meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on items before them. May all of their decisions be righteous in your sight for our benefit and honoring to you. We pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call.
Campbell.
Here.
Gibson. Here. Bill. Appson. Hopper.
Here.
Cash. Here. Lexi.
Here.
Manship. Appson. Oh. Appson. And Williams.
Here. Oh, we do have a quorum. All of you should receive copies of our minutes, the amended minutes, from our meeting of October 6th. Do you have a motion?
Sure.
Motion, Mr. Lexi, second.
Thank you.
Second by Ms. Cash. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Roll call on the amended minutes for October 6th.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. Aye. Lexi.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved and vote of six to zero. Do you have a motion on the amended minutes for our regular meeting of October 20th?
I move to approve.
Motion of Mr. Lexi, second.
Thank you.
Second by Ms. Cash. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You know, then roll call on the amended minutes of October 20th.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. Aye. Lexi.
Aye.
Abstained.
Minutes are approved and vote of five to zero with one abstention. Should you receive copies of our regular minutes from November the 3rd? Do you have a motion?
Sure.
Motion, Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cash. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, then roll call on the minutes of November the 3rd.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. And Lexi.
Aye.
And Williams.
Abstained.
Minutes are approved and vote of five to zero with one abstention. Reports, anyone in the corporation council at this time?
Nothing.
Anyone in the controller?
Nothing.
All of you should receive copies of my report from the RDC, if I started the meeting, if you have any questions, let me know. I think Mr. Paul Pionni has something for us right now.
Oh, excuse me, I was, it should have been six instead of five.
On which one?
On the minutes, the last.
November 3rd?
Mr. Williams abstained.
Mr. Williams abstained.
Yeah, one abstention.
If Mr. Williams abstained on October 20th and November 3rd, then make it five to zero with one abstention.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. That, Mr. Pionni?
Good evening, council. My name is Paul Pionni, I'm the engineering commissioner on senior technician. Thank you for leaving me on the agenda at the front end. I'm here tonight to request a common council's support for a letter that we would like to send to Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Organization for a funding application that we hope to submit by the end of this week. And the project that we're willing to submit is Smith Valley Road, segment two. Its limits are from Meridian Street in Old Town to Valley Oaks Road, which is about in the middle of the overall, about this area on the south side here. We're hoping to get the funding to continue the progress that the city's made over the last several years. We've got the roundabout at Yorktown Road, we have the roundabout on Howard and Herbert, on the Woodman Boulevard, on Madison Avenue. And then last year, we were awarded federal funds for Smith Valley Road, segment one, which is between Browning Drive and Sideway 31. And the design is currently underway for that segment of Smith Valley Road. So, we're wanting to keep the momentum going. We're hoping that since we were approved last year for segment one, the MPO understands that the city's trying to push forward this major corridor through the city that eventually, of course, connects to Interstate 69 out of Johnson County. So again, I'm here just to request that you sign a support letter for this funding application for that project.
I do have a copy of the support letter here, and if we do vote to do this, I will pass it around and each of us can sign it, at least those of us that are here tonight. I did notice that it's addressed to the scoring committee, which indicates that the MPO is a, they take each situation and score it, and that our signing this helps our score.
Yes, that's the intent, to get support from the council of the city to say that, yes, we understand this is a huge project for the city and that we do back it and we hope to receive that funding. We're also sending a funding commitment letter, which we need to come from the mayor's office. And the mayor has already signed that for us to send along with the application also.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the council?
Need a motion to?
Yeah, just need a motion to approve this support letter. Making that motion?
Aye.
Lexi makes a motion, Ms. Gibson seconds it. Let's just do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all votes. All right, thank you, we will pass this around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other committee or board reports? Seeing none, then this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, there's a five-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit per topic. Anyone here? All right, moving on, ordinances and resolutions. There's none under notice of intent to consider. First reading, ordinance number 2529.
Ordinance number 2529, ordinance, providing for additional appropriations for the fire fronts, budget classifications, or 23, $20,233, and 436, $18,601 for repairs and maintenance, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home.
Do you have a motion? Motion of Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open up the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2529. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, close the public hearing, any discussion on the council? Chief, anything you want to tell us? Any questions?
Good evening, council, Jamie Washington, Fire Chief. We had significant year, significant repairs. One was engine, the other's transmission, it's just about $90,000. But we did a nice job of doing those unexpected calls. We're now in a situation that we have some more repairs coming down the pipeline. So I would like to request a suspension of the second reading.
Any questions for the chief at this time? All right, we have a motion on first reading, any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call, ordinance 2529, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. Aye. Lexi.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance 2529 passes first reading, six-zero. Do you have a motion for suspension through second reading?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Cash, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension of the rules, ordinance 2529 through second reading.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. Aye. Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Do you have a motion on second reading? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Ms. Cash. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2529, second reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance 2529 passes second reading, six-zero. Thank you, chief. Second reading, resolution 2518.
Resolution number 2518, a resolution of the City of Greenwood, Council making a preliminary determination to issue bonds, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Oh, yeah, I have a motion. Motion by Ms. Gibson, second, and Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a second public hearing. We'll open it up, if you are here tonight, wish to speak for or against resolution 2518, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, close the public hearing, any discussion on the council? Right, roll call, second reading, resolution 2518.
Campbell. And Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. And Hopper.
Aye.
Resolution 2518 passes second reading, six-zero. Ordinance 2528.
Ordinance number 2528, an ordinance of the City of Greenwood, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital expenditure projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and appropriating the proceeds of the bonds to such purposes to finance such capital projects, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call, second reading, ordinance 2528.
Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
And Cash.
Aye.
Ordinance 2528 passes second reading, six-zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, resolution number 2521.
Resolution number 2521, a resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt the written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately 66.45 acres located between Combs Road and Five Points Road, approximately .75 miles south of County Line Road, referencing annexation ordinance number 25-30, sponsored by Campbell. Nelson, you're going to talk about this.
Here, if you have any questions on this. We have not been to our plan commission public hearing at this time due to the schedule to get it through within the state requirements. So I'm here to ask any questions by purpose of safe staff recommendation until after the plan commission hearing.
All right, any questions, Mr. Nelson? All right, then ordinance 2530.
Ordinance number 2530, an ordinance annexing certain territory contiguous to the City of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it a part of the City of Greenwood and redefining the corporate boundaries of the City of Greenwood, Indiana, to include approximately 66.45 acres located itself at East County Line Road, west of North, North Five Points Road, and east of North, Combs Road, Indy Land, Incorporated, Ronald and Cindy Taylor Properties, sponsored by Campbell.
Any questions? These two are attached nicely.
Yes, they're related, and this one will have a public hearing where the petitioner will be here as well.
All right. All right, any questions? All right, for the rest of the ordinances on our agenda tonight, they are all related. We're going to have them all read into the record at the same time, and then we will have a presentation of all of them after they've all been read into the record. Is that right, everybody? All right, we'll start with ordinance 2531.
Ordinance number 2531, amendments to amend Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, Chapter 1, Section 1-15, general penalties of the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home. Ordinance number 2532, an ordinance to amend the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-18, lessed advantage of vehicles in Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-19, general requirements for animal care and treatment, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home. Ordinance number 2533, an ordinance to amend the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, Chapter 6, Article 6, Section 6-271, lessed enumeration of nuisances in Chapter 6, Article 6, Section 6-288, exterior property areas to identify weeds and other rank vegetation, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home. Ordinance number 2534, an ordinance to amend the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, Chapter 6, Article 6, Section 273, abatement on nuisances regarding appeal rights, my county has been opposing addressing my nuisance, it's not going to be abated, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home. Ordinance number 2535, an ordinance to amend the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, Chapter 6, Article 6, Section 6-291, garbage refuse and trash regarding rubbish, garbage, or refuse placed on placed curbside, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home. Ordinance number 2536, Chapter 6, Article 8, abandoned vehicles, junk cars and junk, on the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, addressing junk or abandoned vehicles within the City of Greenwood, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home. Ordinance number 2537, ordinance, Article 4, parking regulations of the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, regarding parking certainly within the City of Greenwood, sponsored by Hill &amp; Home.
Just a note, I think most of you received an email this afternoon about amendments that would be needed at the ordinance 2536. Since those were sent out prior to tonight's meeting, we won't need to amend it. We'll just introduce the amended version is now the official version. So we, there's no need for amendments. All right. Mike, you're up. The floor is yours.
No, I'll sit up here. Yeah, for the record, down off the important supervisor. Pre-introduction, this is going to be a lengthy process, year-long or over-year-long, device of some of these codes, and how we want to change it to better, but fortunately, those specifically into their. So, have these split up received and parried, and I, we do talk about this personally, 2531.
I'm going to try to present just from my seat here.
You can do it from your.
All right, thank you. So 2531, I'm sorry, ordinance number 2531. We are adding provision that in conditions that says the violation of the public nuisance and abated, provided with the notice of correction, or so we're adding, every general penalties, made aware that it can be abated. And then also adding a provision that says the cost of violating this, of course, may be adjudged to pay the cost of that prosecution.
Okay, 2532. So we stripped out a lot where we do this, we add duplication, services, the county already provides things that we do not endorse, so that's, but that's what this one is. We stripped a lot where we have. This wasn't here last.
Yeah, we've modernized.
Which that is, thanks. Page one. And, this is. I'm sorry about that. Okay. Then we're on to the rank vegetation. What we did here, I guess you could say one man, weed, a plant, flower, it's a simple way to put it. You have people who have urban gardens, urban meadows, it says sometime this herb, weed flower. So what we've done is we've been hyperlinked with this, to explain exactly what are a basis species, and why are considered good for plants and bad plants. This one's there.
So should we, because, it could change sometimes, but since we're language successor, or like, whatever, organization that is.
Okay.
And we'll have to come back every time it's a change in hyperlink to update that.
So the next one is me, it's the, change is made to really appeal rights for one of the nuisances that they declared, the prior ordinance had, I mean, you can there's certain timelines with which you can abate an ordinance, an emergency is 24 hours, seven days for one, another one, nuisance, 10 days for another one to wait. And the ordinance allowed individuals 10 days to appeal. When you got an ordinance, nuisance, that's 24 hours. You know, it should be abated within 24 hours, why are we going to wait 10 days to appeal that? So what we're doing is addressing the timelines with which you can appeal to correspond with the time of the abatement that you need to abate. So if you have 24 hours to wait, it's an emergency, then you have 24 hours to appeal. And that's to the notice to the clerk, so that's clerk, clerk receives that notice that, that, those two days, they, they. So that's one of the big ones we're doing with that. Any good benefits? You had subpart 6-273H1, that again, references the time at which you feel like you don't appeal that, then your appeal rights have, you, you don't want to allow you to appeal if you miss the time. And then if they don't appeal, and the ordinance is upheld, you have a monetary penalty, 50 dollars for initial citation, and you say after that, nuisance is a separate offense. Cost of abating nuisance is a charge against an order, I expect.
Okay, this one's on me. This is one that's been a big headache since I've came into this. This is a property maintenance, and so we would give somebody 10 days to remove these items from the curb. If they didn't remove it, it would then go to legal, which gave them another 10 days. And low and behold, quite often, we rolled into heavy traction. So this, these things would sit out here for the entire month. Unfortunately, we have landlords and companies, owners of, have these things, have taken advantage of that, and they know that. So they lose a renter, they give to the outside, leave it in the curb. So the changes we want to do with this is this will be actually something that's going to be a nuisance that we can issue tickets in order to expedite getting this out. It's, it's been proven in studies that when you have this in a neighborhood, it just adds to more problems. I call it a living effect. Once one, one person sees the heavy trash out, they think it's heavy trash, and it just spreads down this year. But this way, this is something that can be cleared up and out, no problem, quickly. And once, I would tell you, having worked with the property maintenance companies, now that we're out, proactive doing some of these things, they will take, once they learn, they will drop that line. This one.
I can start at this one. Yeah, sorry. So this is an abandoned vehicles, junk cars and junk section that we're ending. The Indiana code mandates that council adopt an ordinance to perpetuate the vehicle statute. We had an abandoned vehicle statute, but it's a little, notice requirements, the statute. Also, the Indiana code requires that city adopt an abandoned vehicle fund and appropriate certain monies to the abandoned vehicle fund, so the ordinance can be enforced. Any costs associated with enforcing the abandoned vehicle ordinance to the abandoned fund, that wasn't done in our, in our ordinance, so we're going to need to regularly delete the entire ordinance, the language that included this one. So council can establish that fund, fund it through appropriation and we're complying with that. The other thing that, as I indicated, was a part of our ordinance, that it didn't have the notice requirements, so we expanded the definitions of abandoned vehicles, we also improved what mechanically inoperable vehicle was, because it's incumbent upon the city to establish that's mechanically inoperable, so we expanded the definition of what that means. I think John has had experience where vehicles, for example, six inches into the dirt, grass going around, we had that as part of the applicable vehicle. Not a specific vehicle, but that kind of circumstance. We also identified the timeline of which you can move vehicles 72 hours, bring in the vehicle other than one parked on a highway or in a interstate, so those can be moved within 24 hours, having given notice. But you have to find appropriate notice that you are required to provide. So we have to do a post towing notice, and, I'm sorry, pre-towing notice and a post towing notice for us to comply with the statute and ordinance, so that's also included within this ordinance. Have vehicles, identified vehicle worth more than $1,000 with those vehicles. And vehicles with less than $1,000. Because if you don't, if someone, once we get post towing notice, that they need to claim the vehicle within 20 days, if they don't, they can be sold. If you if there's vehicle, for example, if you don't have a vehicle identification number, that's not, then it cannot be read, so you can't identify a vehicle, then that vehicle can be sold immediately. You know, there's no notice requirements for that. So it's really a lot of notice, towing the vehicle, and definitions. How much money is we have to put in this fund? It didn't say.
We also added that this sports equipment, like ATVs, side-by-sides, garden equipment, that if we, somebody choose to play, leave outside, find those as a vehicle also.
Jet skis. And what's interesting is that abandoned vehicles must be visible from the public property. I found interesting because if it's in the back, if it's on, if it's not visible from public property, it's not considered an abandoned vehicle. So your neighbor, you live in an abandoned vehicle, but obviously can't see from the street. It's all a cost. Don't tell me if I'm at the well, yes. Get a ladder to the back street. That's all for that.
Okay, the 2537 is on the, this is your parking vehicles. You can see the semis up here. We have played cat and mouse. So once we get a complaint on the semi, we go out, we give them a, some correction. By the time that expires, they go off, they go back on the road. And then I'm sure some of you've seen what we had down at the Tomlin lot, with all the semis that were parking in there. Took me, I got a whole lot of owners of the property, they kind of barricaded that off because they were tearing up their parking. But what this will do, this will give us the opportunity to get tickets with on-site and then also property holders, so if they're on-site somebody's property, then we can take them too. So if he drives and leaves his partner's girlfriend's house, she can take it off some somewhere. So if he drives and leaves his partner's girlfriend's house, she can take it off somewhere. And then we went back through the RV ordinance and trailer codes. There were some confusing parts of the old resolution that were in there. There were some loopholes in that. So somebody put eighteen feet and under could be in front of the building line, thirty-two feet. Right, eighteen feet over could be behind the building line. And then it limited us to two such vehicles, because we've had instances where a contractor or somebody lived in a house, and they'll have to, a boot stank trailer, a flatbed trailer, an enclosed trailer, so then we, maybe just take it down to two. As the old resolution had a writ, they could have one of each. And this is Terry, thank you, just up here. That was supposed to be a Chicago there signing, but he did right, did a lot of hard work in this, so.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, this lady's business. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, there's a five-minute time limit per person and a twenty-minute time limit per topic. Seeing none, then council, this lady's business, I sent you all an email this afternoon and included a copy of our twenty-twenty-six meeting schedule. Any questions about that?
No, but usually don't we take, do Wednesday Day for Election Day? So then May fourth, I think it was, is the day before election? That was the one.
Dude, what about November?
But we don't care for some people that are trying to say...
Are there elections, this next, you know, county elections? Yeah, so you want to move November third to, I'm sorry, May?
Tuesday after the first Monday.
That first, after the first Monday, that's why it's not the sixth, dude. That would be May thirteenth?
Which day would be it?
This is the sixth.
Tuesday after the first.
So May sixth? And our council meeting scheduled for May fourth? Oh, I'm looking at twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah. So we're... Fourth is Monday, Election Day would be the fifth.
All right, so we would do it on May the sixth? And then, so we'll change to May four to May sixth, and in November?
Yeah. It's the second to the fourth.
Do you change it to the fourth? That agreeable to everybody?
That's true.
All right, any, anything else? All right, then all in favor, say aye. Oh, I need a motion. Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Lexi. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? It passes unanimously with those changes. Anything else from the council? Any thing from the corporation council?
Nothing.
Anything from the controller's office?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor? You're a chair, thank you, everyone.